You're listening to Audiology. Support our work on Patreon and be sure to submit your requests for topics in the comments below. The United States Supreme Court made a groundbreaking decision in nineteen fifty-four, known as Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, which changed the course of American history. It declared that laws creating racial segregation in public schools were unconstitutional, even if the schools were equal in other ways. This decision challenged the old ruling from eighteen ninety-six Plessy versus Ferguson, which said racial segregation was okay if facilities were equal, a policy summarized as "separate but equal." Unanimously, the Supreme Court said no, setting the stage for desegregation and marking a significant triumph for the civil rights movement, inspiring many more legal battles for equality. The story starts in Topeka, Kansas, in nineteen fifty-one, when a black resident, Oliver Brown, found his daughter couldn't attend the school nearest to their home because of segregation. Instead, she was sent to a separate school for black children further away. The Browns, along with twelve other families, fought back. They sued the Topeka Board of Education claiming segregation violated the Constitution. Initially, they lost in a federal district court, which adhered to the "separate but equal" argument. But with National Association for the Advancement of Colored People Chief Counsel Thurgood Marshall leading their appeal, the case moved up to the Supreme Court. In May nineteen fifty-four, in a landmark nine-zero decision, the Supreme Court stood with the Browns stating "separate educational facilities are inherently unequal." This ruling highlighted that segregation went against the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Yet the decision didn't outline how to end segregation, and it took another year in a follow-up decision known as Brown the Second for the court to demand desegregation proceed with all deliberate speed. The reaction in the southern United States ranged from reluctant acceptance to outright defiance, with many white communities engaging in massive resistance to keep segregation intact. This resistance was part of a broader challenge against the ruling, but the Supreme Court reaffirmed its stance in nineteen fifty-eight with Cooper versus Aaron, making it clear that no state official could ignore its mandate on desegregation. Brown versus Board of Education was more than a legal victory. It was a pivotal moment for civil rights, setting the stage for the integration of schools across America and empowering the fight for equal rights across various sectors of society. For the sixty years leading up to the landmark Brown versus Board of Education case, the United States grappled with racial segregation, a practice supported by the Plessy versus Ferguson Supreme Court decision of eighteen ninety-six. This ruling stated that segregation did not breach the Fourteenth Amendment's Equal Protection Clause as long as facilities for different races were equal. However, the implementation of segregation, especially in education, varied greatly across the states, with some enforcing it and others banning it. In the nineteen thirties, Howard University scholars and National Association for the Advancement of Colored People activists embarked on a legal journey to challenge public education segregation, initially targeting graduate schools. Their efforts bore fruit in the Sweat versus Painter and McLaurin versus Oklahoma State Regents cases of nineteen fifty, where segregation was shown to be inherently unequal, laying the groundwork for Brown. The Brown case argued that the so-called "separate but equal principle" actually led to substandard conditions for black Americans. Influential in this decision were international condemnations of racism, such as the United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organization's nineteen fifty statement, "The Race Question," and Gunner Murdal's book, "An American Dilemma", both of which criticized scientific justifications for racism and morally denounced it. During the Cold War's peak, US leaders, including Supreme Court justices, were painfully aware of how segregation damaged America's global reputation. Justice William O. Douglas, during his nineteen fifty visit to India, encountered direct questions about America's tolerance of lynching, leading him to realize the significant impact of US racial policies on its international relationships. Chief Justice Earl Warren, speaking in nineteen fifty-four, emphasized that America's commitment to its constitutional values, more than its military power, would determine its global standing and respect. In nineteen fifty-one, a significant legal challenge was initiated against the Topeka-Kansas Board of Education by thirteen parents on behalf of their twenty children. They sought to end the school district's practice of keeping black and white students in separate schools, a situation that arose because of a Kansas law from eighteen seventy-nine. This law allowed, but didn't force, areas with over fifteen thousand people to have different schools for black and white children in grades kindergarten through sixth. This group of parents was brought together by the Topeka Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, led by Chairman McKinley Burnett and legal minds like Charles Scott and Lucinda Todd. One notable parent, Oliver Brown, took a stand after his third-grade daughter, Linda Carol Brown, was forced to travel a great distance to her segregated school instead of attending the nearby white school. Brown, a welder and assistant pastor, was persuaded to join this cause by his childhood friend Charles Scott. This move was strategic, aiming to position a male at the forefront to appeal to the Supreme Court. The plaintiffs included Oliver Brown among others, with Zelma Henderson being the last surviving member. She passed away in two thousand eight. The district court, however, sided with the Board of Education, referencing the "separate but equal doctrine" established by the Plessy versus Ferguson case. Judge Walter Huxman and his panel acknowledged that segregation negatively impacted black children, but claimed that Topeka schools were equal in quality, thus denying the plea for integration. This decision, particularly the acknowledgement of segregation's harm, would later play a role in the Supreme Court's review of the case. The Supreme Court case of Brown versus Board of Education actually brought together five separate cases, all supported by the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. These included the Maine Brown case, along with others from South Carolina, Virginia, Delaware, and Washington DC. The Virginia case was particularly noteworthy because it started from a student protest led by sixteen-year-old Barbara Rose Johns, who organized a walkout with four hundred fifty other students. On the other hand, the Delaware case was the only one where a court originally recognized the unlawfulness of segregation before reaching the Supreme Court. A unique aspect of the Kansas case was that there were no claims about the physical facilities or staff of the segregated schools being inferior. The district court noted that the schools were essentially equal in physical facilities, curriculum, and staff quality. However, it also mentioned that black students had to travel much longer distances to their schools than white students, even though transportation was provided free of charge for the black students, a service not offered to white students. Meanwhile, in Delaware, the court's decision to integrate a white high school with black students stood out due to the clear highlighting of segregation's harms and inequality. The United Auto Workers, under Walter Ruther's leadership, notably contributed seventy-five thousand dollars to support the NAACP's legal efforts in the Supreme Court. Thurgood Marshall, who would later become a Supreme Court justice himself, represented the plaintiffs. Meanwhile, Paul Wilson, starting his career in appellate arguments, presented a rather unsure defense for the state. During the case, the Justice Department submitted a "friend of the court" brief that unusually focused on the Truman Administration's international concerns related to the Cold War. Most of this brief discussed how segregation damaged the United States image and relations with countries newly emerging from colonial rule, echoing Attorney General James P. McGranary and Secretary of State Dean Acheson's criticisms of racism tarnishing the US's reputation globally. Though the Supreme Court's decision in Brown didn't explicitly mention these international policy concerns, experts like British barrister Anthony Lester believed they played a significant role in the ruling. In the spring of nineteen fifty-three, the Supreme Court faced a challenging decision regarding whether the Fourteenth Amendment's Equal Protection Clause made it unconstitutional for public schools to be segregated by race. Initially, the court couldn't reach a decision and decided to revisit the case in the fall, focusing specifically on this critical question. The push to rehear the case came from Associate Justice Felix Frankfurter, who saw the delay as a chance to build a unified stance against segregation. The justices who supported ending segregation worked tirelessly to persuade their colleagues who were hesitant or planning to oppose the move to join them in a unanimous decision. They believed a unanimous decision was crucial to prevent segregation supporters from using any dissent as a justification for their cause. Before the final decision, there was a clear split among the justices. Some, like justices William O. Douglas and Hugo Black, were ready to overturn previous rulings that allowed segregation. Others had various concerns. For example, Justice Stanley F. Reed talked about incomplete cultural integration and states' rights and expressed an opinion that segregation might be beneficial for black communities. The sudden death of Chief Justice Fred M. Vincent in September nineteen fifty-three and the appointment of Earl Warren as his replacement marked a turning point. Warren, known for his support of integration from his time dealing with the Mendez versus Westminster case in California, was eager to lead the court towards ending segregation. At a meeting convened by Warren, he presented a powerful argument. He stated that supporting segregation could only be based on the belief in black people's inferiority. He insisted that to uphold the court's integrity and promote liberty, the decision to end segregation must be unanimous and clear. Warren's leadership and persuasive skills were pivotal, bringing all the justices, including the initially reluctant ones, to agree on a unanimous decision. He worked meticulously on the draft opinion, refining it again and again until it gained the full support of the court. This effort culminated in a historic and unanimous ruling that struck down legalized school segregation, with Justice Reed, the last to be persuaded, reportedly moved to tears during the announcement of the decision. On May seventeenth nineteen fifty-four, in a landmark decision, the Supreme Court unanimously ruled nine to zero in favor of the Brown family and others, marking a pivotal point in the fight against racial segregation in schools. Chief Justice Earl Warren wrote a single opinion that all the justices agreed on. The case centered on whether the Fourteenth Amendment, created in eighteen sixty-eight, was intended to end segregation in public schools. The Supreme Court confessed it struggled to find a clear answer, even after a thorough review of historical documents and a second round of oral arguments focused on the amendment's origins and intentions. The discussion delved deeply into the circumstances of the Fourteenth Amendment's creation, its ratification, and the racial segregation practices at the time. The court said, however, this historical exploration did not provide a definitive solution to the issue at hand. Acknowledging the significant societal and governmental changes since the late eighteen sixties, the court highlighted the drastically different role of public education in society by nineteen fifty-four, emphasizing its importance in modern American life. Back in the late eighteen sixties, public schools were rare in the South, and where they existed, they were significantly segregated. Southern white children from families who could afford it attended private schools, while the education for black children was almost nonexistent. Some states even had laws prohibiting the education of black people. By nineteen fifty-four, however, education had become a critical function of local and state governments. The Supreme Court recognized that while some efforts had been made to improve the quality of schools for black children to make them "equal" to white schools on a tangible level, the core issue remained the psychological harm caused by segregation. The court posed the question: Does separating children in schools based on race, even if the facilities are equal, deprive the children of equal educational opportunities? Their answer was a resounding yes. They stated that segregation, even in schools of equal quality, inherently causes psychological damage to the segregated children, fostering a sense of inferiority that could have long-lasting impacts. Referencing studies, including those by Kenneth and Mamie Clark, showing that segregation affected black children's self-perception and learning, the court concluded that "separate but equal" in public education is inherently unequal, violating the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, and thus unconstitutional. The court declared that segregated public education has no place, as separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. However, the Supreme Court did not immediately mandate how to implement school integration. Instead, it asked for further discussions on the appropriate solution, setting the stage for what would be known as Brown the Second. While many Americans welcomed the Supreme Court's ruling in Brown with open arms, a significant portion of white Southerners had the opposite reaction. To them, the decision was seen as a disaster, comparable to the shock of Pearl Harbor. This stark opposition meant that making progress towards school integration in the South was a slow and challenging process. Political historian Robert G. McCloskey noted that the reaction from white Southerners was both loud and determined. While some states on the border of the South began to desegregate and allow a few African-American students into formerly all-white schools, the deep South largely ignored the court's orders. In some places, the decision to desegregate actually led to stronger resistance against integration. In Virginia, for example, Senator Harry F. Byrd spearheaded the Massive Resistance Movement, which went as far as closing schools altogether rather than integrating them. Following the Brown decision, there was a notable movement to dismiss or lay off African-American educators who had been employed at segregated schools as efforts were made to establish integrated schools under white leadership. Historian Michael Foltz pointed out that in many instances, the South was quicker to remove black educators than to actually desegregate the schools, moving with a deliberate speed to assert this new structure. In the late nineteen fifties and early nineteen sixties, several states in the US actively resisted the desegregation of schools, a form of racial integration mandated by the federal government. For example, Texas Attorney General John Ben Shepard led an initiative to create legal barriers against desegregation efforts. In a notable event in September nineteen fifty-seven, the governor of Arkansas, Orval Phobus, made headlines when he deployed the Arkansas Army National Guard to prevent nine African-American students, who would become famous as the "Little Rock Nine," from entering Little Rock Central High School. This bold move prompted President Dwight D. Eisenhower to take decisive action, taking control of the Arkansas National Guard and sending US Army troops from the One Hundred First Airborne Division to protect and ensure the students could attend school safely. That same year, reactions in Florida were mixed. The state legislature passed a resolution to nullify the court's desegregation decision, a stance Florida Governor Leroy Collins did not support. Though he was against the court's decision, Collins believed any opposition should follow lawful processes, and consequently did not sign the resolution. In Mississippi, the fear of violent retaliation was so intense that for nine years, no one dared to file a lawsuit challenging school segregation. This changed in nineteen sixty-three when Medgar Evers, fighting to desegregate schools in Jackson, Mississippi, was assassinated by Byron de la Bequeville, a member of the White Citizens Council. Despite two trials in the nineteen sixties, Bequeville was not convicted of Evers murder until nineteen ninety-four. Another standout moment in the fight against segregation was in June nineteen sixty-three, when Alabama Governor George Wallace famously blocked the entrance to the University of Alabama to prevent two African-American students from enrolling. This act was in line with his staunch pro-segregation stance, famously declaring "segregation now, segregation tomorrow, segregation forever," in his inaugural address that year. Wallace only relented when General Henry Visgram of the Alabama National Guard, acting on President John F. Kennedy's directive, stepped in. Segregation also deeply affected Native American communities. Native children faced school integration barriers based on their skin complexion, with lighter-skinned children being allowed transportation to previously all-white schools, while darker-skinned children from the same communities were denied. Learning about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s desegregation efforts in Birmingham, Alabama, tribal leaders sought his support. King's prompt intervention helped quickly address and resolve these issues. In North Carolina, the strategy seemed to be one of apparent agreement with the Brown versus Board of Education decision, while quietly resisting its implementation in reality. On the eighteenth of May nineteen fifty-four, the School Board of Greensboro, North Carolina, led by D. E. Hudgens Jr., a Rhodes Scholar and noted attorney, pledged to comply with the Brown decision. This marked Greensboro as the first city in the South to make such an announcement. Despite this initial commitment, some locals opposed the actual process of school integration, using legal routes to create obstacles for years. Integration in schools did not become a reality until nineteen sixty-nine, when federal authorities found Greensboro in violation of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Full integration of the city's schools began in nineteen seventy-one after a series of local legal challenges and both peaceful and violent protests. Greensboro, once considered a progressive city, was ironically one of the last to achieve school desegregation. In Moberly, Missouri, schools adhered to the desegregation order. However, after nineteen fifty-five, African-American teachers from the local school for black students were dismissed, allegedly due to poor performance. Their legal challenge was unsuccessful, ultimately being denied even by the Supreme Court. Virginia was deeply entrenched in responses to the Brown decision, especially since one of its cases was included in the Brown ruling. US Senator Harry F. Byrd from Virginia spearheaded a campaign dubbed "Massive Resistance Against the Decision." Following his initiative, Governor Thomas Stanley and the Gray Commission, which he created, recommended that locality should have the discretion to determine how to enact desegregation. This advice led to a nineteen fifty-six policy, granting the governor the authority to close any school mandated to desegregate by the courts. This policy was indeed enforced by Governor J. Lindsay Almond in nineteen fifty-eight, shutting down schools in Charlottesville, Norfolk, and Warren County, and leaving ten thousand students without educational facilities, despite efforts from local parents. The closures were reconsidered in early nineteen fifty-nine after both the Virginia Supreme Court and a federal court deemed them unconstitutional. Schools in Arlington County and Norfolk then integrated without incident, with the rest of the counties soon following suit, except for Prince Edward County. In an extreme measure, Prince Edward County ceased all public school funding rather than integrate, leading to the shutdown of its public schools from nineteen fifty-nine to nineteen sixty-three. The county provided tuition grants for private, yet still segregated, education, effectively depriving the black students of educational opportunities within the county. This state of affairs persisted until nineteen sixty-four, when the US Supreme Court ruled in Griffin versus County School Board of Prince Edward County that the county's actions violated the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. Even in northern cities, there was a wide gap in educational resources between black and white neighborhoods, essentially creating segregation without official laws to support it. Take Harlem, New York as an example. There hadn't been a new school built since the nineteen hundreds, and not even a nursery school was in place despite the overcrowding due to the second great migration. The schools that did exist were in poor condition and often had teachers with little experience. Northern officials might have denied the existence of segregation, but the landmark Brown versus Board of Education case sparked activism among African-American parents. One notable activist, May Mallory, received support from the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and successfully sued New York City and the state of New York, using the principles established by Brown as a foundation. Mallory, along with thousands of other parents, also organized a school boycott in nineteen fifty-nine, making their voices heard even louder. This boycott led to the creation of some of the first "freedom schools." As a result of this activism, the city allowed for more flexible transfers to higher-quality schools that were historically white. However, this brought about a new challenge: dealing with white flight, where white families moved away from these integrated schools, which was an issue that New York's African-American community and northern desegregation activists had to face. Since nineteen forty-one, junior high schools in Topeka had already allowed students of different races to learn together. Going even further back, Topeka High School welcomed students of all races since it first opened its doors in eighteen seventy-one, and its sports teams have been integrated since nineteen forty-nine. This was largely because, in Kansas, laws that allowed schools to separate students by race were only applicable up to the high school level. A significant change occurred after a district court decision. Both the election outcomes and the political atmosphere in Topeka shifted. By August nineteen fifty-three, the Topeka Board of Education started the process of desegregating elementary schools in two districts. By January nineteen fifty-six, all elementary schools in Topeka were organized into neighborhood attendance centers, though students already attending a school were given the choice to stay at that school if they wanted. Zelma Henderson, who was part of the lawsuit that would challenge segregation, remarked in a two thousand four interview that "desegregation" occurred smoothly in Topeka, noting that it wasn't long before teachers and principals were also integrated without incident. In recognition of his efforts to end segregation, the administration building of Topeka Public Schools is named after McKinley Burnett, the president of the local chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, who played a pivotal role in organizing the case that would lead to desegregation. Additionally, Monroe Elementary holds a place in history as well, designated as a national historic site under the National Park Service in nineteen ninety-two, and then elevated to a national historical park in two thousand twenty-two. The Supreme Court's decision in Plessy versus Ferguson in eighteen ninety-six, which upheld the constitutionality of racial segregation under the "separate but equal doctrine," was influenced in part by the scientific racism common at the time. However, it was the widespread racist beliefs among white people that likely fueled popular support for the decision. Later, when the Supreme Court made its historical decision in Brown versus Board of Education, it dismissed these outdated notions, referring to social science research that highlighted the detrimental effects of segregated schools on black children. This decision did not just change laws, it challenged the societal norms of the time, provoking both support and backlash. In response to the Brown decision, the Mankind Quarterly Journal was founded in nineteen sixty, reflecting a segment of opposition rooted in then-contemporary ideas about heredity and race. In nineteen fifty-two, as a young law clerk for Justice Robert H. Jackson, William Rehnquist shared his thoughts in a memorandum titled "A Random Thought on the Segregation Cases." This occurred during the early stages leading up to the landmark Brown versus Board of Education case. Rehnquist made a controversial argument in his memorandum stating, "I realize that it is an unpopular and unhumanitarian position for which I have been excoriated by liberal colleagues, but I think Plessy versus Ferguson was right and should be reaffirmed." He further argued that majority opinions should ultimately determine minority rights, a viewpoint that was sharply criticized by many. Yet Rehnquist also mentioned that despite his statements, the sentiments expressed might not reflect his personal beliefs, but rather those of Justice Jackson, whom he was clerking for. Specifically during his nineteen seventy-one confirmation hearings, Rehnquist clarified, "I believe that the memorandum was prepared by me as a statement of Justice Jackson's tentative views for his own use." His later Supreme Court tenure did not show attempts to overturn or weaken the Brown decision. In fact, he often cited it as precedent. The Brown decision did face criticism, including from legal scholars and judges who felt the court overstepped its traditional role. Judge Learned Hand and Herbert Wexler were among those who voiced such concerns. Meanwhile, Supreme Court Justice Clarence Thomas has pointed out that Brown was misunderstood by some to suggest that racially-isolated schools were inherently unequal, noting that the issue was with de jure segregation, not de facto segregation. When it comes to interpreting the Fourteenth Amendment and its stance on segregation, the debate continues among scholars. Some originalists, like Raoul Berger, argue that the historical context and legislative actions surrounding the amendment's passage support a reading that states could maintain segregated schools. On the other hand, scholars such as Michael W. McConnell have argued, using historical records, that there was indeed an intention among some framers of the Fourteenth Amendment to support desegregated schools. This academic debate highlights the complexities in understanding the original intent of the Fourteenth Amendment. Furthermore, some critics, including Drew S. Days III, suggest that focusing on psychological harm in segregation cases may not be necessary, advocating for a focus on the principle of equality. Robert Bork, in contrast, defended the Brown decision, emphasizing the inconsistency between segregation and the quest for equality. The history of the Brown versus Board of Education decision is also interwoven with individual contributions, such as those of Philip Elman, who claimed significant influence over the court's direction and public affirmations of the decision's importance, including from President George W. Bush during the fiftieth anniversary of the ruling. Critics like Thomas Sowell have highlighted perceived flaws or unintended consequences of the decision, such as the impact on schools like Dunbar High School, stressing the nuanced and ongoing dialogue surrounding this pivotal moment in American jurisprudence. In nineteen fifty-five, the US Supreme Court had to deal with appeals from schools asking for guidance on how to integrate, following its landmark decision to end racial segregation. The court's response, known as Brown Two, instructed local courts to oversee the process, urging them to act with all deliberate speed. This phrase, borrowed from the poem "The Hound of Heaven" by Francis Thompson, was meant to push the process along. However, this directive didn't sit well with those who had celebrated the original decision to end segregation. They found all deliberate speed too vague and open-ended, fearing it wouldn't guarantee quick action. Regrettably, their worries proved valid. Many schools in the southern US saw the vague language as a loophole, allowing them to drag their feet or outright resist integrating for many years, employing various strategies. Some school districts even shut down public schools or funneled state funds into segregated private schools. There were also instances of token integration, where a few selected black students were admitted into previously all-white schools, but the vast majority of black students remained in underfunded, unequal schools. A telling example occurred in Prince Edward County, Virginia, where the district court ruled that immediate desegregation wasn't necessary based on Brown Two. When eventually ordered to start integrating in nineteen fifty-nine, the county chose instead to close its public schools for five years. During this time, white students received aid to attend private, whites-only academies, while black students were left without educational options unless they left the county. This bleak period only ended when the Supreme Court, in the case of Griffin versus County School Board of Prince Edward County, criticized the "all deliberate speed" directive and ordered the county to reopen its public schools ordered the county to reopen its public schools to all students, regardless of race. In nineteen seventy-eight, three lawyers from Topeka, named Richard Jones, Joseph Johnson, and Charles Scott Jr., along with help from the American Civil Liberties Union, convinced Linda Brown Smith to join a lawsuit. Linda, whose father was part of the original Brown versus Board of Education case, and now had kids in Topeka schools, became a key plaintiff in an effort to tackle segregation issues once again. The lawyers were worried that Topeka's open enrollment policy was leading to more segregation in schools, where white parents might choose schools for their children, that would result in schools predominantly attended by either African-American or European-American students. After a twenty-five-year break, the court revisited the Brown case but initially didn't side with the plaintiffs, declaring the schools "integrated" or "unitary." However, in nineteen eighty-nine, a panel from the Tenth Circuit Court disagreed on a two-to-one vote, pointing out that the problem of segregation hadn't been fully addressed, especially in how students and staff were assigned. The Supreme Court didn't take up the school district's appeal in nineteen ninety-three, and the case was sent back to be resolved by Judge Richard Rogers. Following a plan set in nineteen ninety-four, that included passing a bond and opening additional magnet elementary schools, Topeka schools were redrawn to achieve racial balance. By nineteen ninety-eight, this effort was successful, and in nineteen ninety-nine, Topeka Unified School District Number Five Hundred One was officially recognized as being racially balanced. In honor of their contributions to the Brown case and civil rights, one of the new magnet schools is named after the Scott family attorneys. Thanks for watching. Share your thoughts in the comments and subscribe for more content.